Have a good safe Christmas. And wish everybody have a good New Year. We're just going through this pandemic, so. Next up, we'll go ahead and call a roll call. Shannon Wadzick.
Here.
Deborah Milton.
Here.
Kendra Sellers.
Here.
Senator. She's gone. Ruben Vice. I don't know if Cindy is there.
She's signing in, Charles.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, Senator, I'm just calling a roll call, so you see.
Cindy.
For the record. And at this time, Ruben is not here then, but anyway, he's trying to allow him. So the first item on the agenda today is discussion regarding the recruitment of the director of health wards. And Dan had filed a couple more job description that would be good to look at and maybe we get some ideas out of that or whatever, but it is sure. There was two different, one completely different to me. I mean, it was wasn't have very much kind of real significance. One from Eagle Lake was pretty simple, but the other one, I mean, they really had a lot. I mean, they had lots of ideas that we may want to take from. So I don't know if y'all had a chance to look at them.
I thought we had agreed on the one that Renee brought to us, and we just added that we would prefer that they live in the city limits of Seagrave. So I'm not for sure what.
I mean, you know, what I was thinking about, you know, are they in a special requirement like at least high school education? You know, we didn't say anything about that. In that I saw. But, you know, it was just, it was quite a bit of a more, well, maybe it looked more of a different format. It made it look like it was a little more impressive, but if it was just some ideas, we might want to look in and see if there's someone who will start doing it or stop doing it or whatever.
So has any of the job postings been listed or y'all still looking at this after we had already said to use Renee's with the addition?
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, that's what we go use. This is just something that Dan had pulled for us.
Okay, has the job been posted anywhere?
No.
Okay, why?
We hadn't talked about it, but two weeks since we've just, that's what we mean today to talk about it.
No, we had decided that to use.
We weren't going to post it until we talked today.
Okay.
I mean, if y'all okay with where it is right now, that's fine. We can, we can go from there. I mean, if y'all want to add or delete or take away, we can post it.
Did y'all get Renee's? Do you want, did he resend that to y'all or? I didn't bring it with me, so.
You know, one thing, I don't know, we didn't talk about it, you know, we, we did, you know, we said we really wanted to live here in Seagrave. And I thought about, you know, for example, somebody might have a real nice, good job and they come here and work for six months and quit. Do y'all think about a contract? I bet they will. If somebody got a real, I mean, we go, we asked for somebody good talent and good skill, they're probably gonna have a very nice job, so. These just some ideas I'm throwing out there. If, if I would, if I was that individual, I would definitely want a contract. I mean, if you quit your job, a really good job and, and all of a sudden you come up and don't like the situation as you go and like get run off. I mean, I'm just throwing it at them and just consider, but you know, you can expect it. We don't have to post it or anything, but I'm sure the person that's.
That's what I'm saying. It doesn't, in either of these that you send, it doesn't say anything about a contract. I just don't understand why it hasn't been posted anywhere. I mean, you know, we'll worry about the contract situation when we find some people that even want to interview.
Just forget about those two. Those were just something we sent out there just for you to look at to see if you want to take advantage of that away from. If you're satisfied with what Renee's put, sit us, that's fine with me. If I want to leave everything as it is and we can post it, we can be done with this. Okay, everybody's ready to go with this? Do y'all want to vote? So we can have an official reaction and I rip that and then we go, we are going to post the job description. This currently we have from Renee today.
This is Alderman Sellers. I'm gonna make a motion that we post.
Do what?
This is Alderman Sellers.
You cut out on my end here.
Can y'all hear me?
Kendra, I can hear you now.
This is Alderman Sellers.
Yes.
Kendra, you're getting an echo, Kendra.
Go ahead, Kendra. Hello. Good. She's muted.
Kendra Sellers was making a motion that we go ahead and post the job with the change in that we would recommend that they live in the Seagrave city limits, is that correct? And Shannon Wadzick, seconds.
Okay, motion has been made and second in all with favor. Alderman, Ruben Vice.
Aye.
Alderman, Kendra Sellers.
Aye.
Alderman, Shannon Wadzick.
Aye.
Alderman, Deborah Milton.
Aye.
And Alderman, Senator. Most have been made and passed that we will post the job description as we got it, but we will add to it that the the individual must live in Seagrave. Okay. The next item is is the discussion regarding the possible alternative for City Hall and the police department. I guess the alternative is the lots we purchased just north of the police station in the west of the City Hall and in the Dairy Queen. Is the two areas that we are considering.
This is Alderman Middleton. Whatever happened with the we had talked about renovating what we already have because of us buying the property behind it. And I thought we had said that we wanted to get someone on that. We wanted to get, you know.
We did. Yeah, that's, that's what we did when we sent out a we posted in the paper to get a qualified.
Renovations for what the City Hall that we have now.
But we had to get somebody qualified to do that. And we went out and forbade all that. And we have the firm out of Minnesota is gonna do that. The one was in our meeting the last week. They, they're the one that gonna look at them along with John and tell us that we'll sue them, switch best, their choice, their opinion. What you, you're talking the same thing. We have done that, but we never have selected. We couldn't do that. We didn't have this. Actually, we didn't have the experience or the knowledge to do it. So we, that's what we're gonna use this, this engineering firm to do. And if that, do y'all not understand what I'm talking about?
I mean, the other day we were talking about a brand new building, not.
But that's what we're here for today is to talk about what are we gonna do? This is what this meeting is for. I mean, the options, so this is what we're going to talk about today. Are we gonna take, you know, at one time, we talked about taking our City Hall and, and modify it or whatever we want to do. And that's where we, then we bought those lots back there. We was gonna, I thought we was gonna build a City Hall and a police station. When we initially started this process, a project, you know, at first we were gonna do this on Main Street with trying to get it viewed properly. That went away. We're gonna do away with our police station and then next, so reading how we got into having to get do the, you know, qualified engineering is we were gonna first build the animal control building. And we were right in the middle of processing with two different contractors. And all of a sudden, we found out we were, the whole process we were doing was wrong. And we had to drop that. And then we started up again. So, okay, you gotta get a qualified engineer and you got to post it. I mean, this is what that tells we had to do. That's why we went through this process. We sent out all of these. I mean, we posted this in the paper file, I don't know, six, eight weeks. And we down, narrowed it down to three. And then we're gonna be with them and then we selected company out of Michigan. So anyway, they was on last week in our last meeting.
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
That's, we, we know that, but you had, you know, what was said last week, like two weeks ago is that, you know, we were looking at, we had hired them and we were looking at building a new City Hall and Police Department.
Yes.
And, and what I'm saying is the firm that we hired, that the little committee meeting met and y'all picked the one and we voted on. Are they, are they only figuring for a new, okay, Dan, I'm sorry, you're shaking your head. Somebody else, go ahead.
Mayor, can I say something?
Yes.
So there, the purpose of, or what the architect is supposed to do is present different alternatives to you guys. And so one alternative would be a new building. Another alternative would be to renovate the existing building. A third alternative could be purchasing a building and renovating that building. So you could end up with three or more alternatives. And that is all discussed in the preliminary architect report. And so no one is required to make a decision prior to getting that report that, that where he shows all of the, you know, the cost of doing each one and what the, you know, benefits and, you know, costs are of each one. And based on that report, then the council can make a decision on what they want to do. I mean, that's, that's the purpose of the report. And I, I don't think anyone expects you to make a decision upfront that, you know, that very few councils would, would want to you know, have that already decided upfront, you know, without seeing all the figures and doing a cost estimate on each one. So I, I just, I hope that clears it up a little bit.
At some point, I guess he, that engineer were to get with us and we would kind of tell him kind of what we want. We would do that after he presented his idea. I mean, I'm sure you get what we want to try to have constructed along with his ideas. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, he, he's just gonna make a, a recommendation. He's gonna look at all the different alternatives. And you guys can tell him what alternatives you want to look at. If it's the DQ building or if it's, you know, whatever it is, I mean, you guys tell him what you want him to look at and evaluate, and then he'll do the report. And, and then the council can review that report and make a decision based on, you know, it'd be a more informed decision that you can make at that point. And so, I mean, I, I think the, the, the stage that we're at right now is just simply hiring this architect and giving him his marching orders on what to do. You know, and so it's, I, I don't think anybody can, can really make an informed decision on you know, where the building, you know, maybe you've got a good idea where you want the building. I mean, obviously, it's got to be in town somewhere. But I mean, other than that, you just tell him the, the three or four alternatives you want him to evaluate and sign the, the architect agreement and you give him a notice to proceed. You know, what you want him to do, but the first thing he has to do is that report.
Yes, yes.
This is Alderman, Ruben.
Yeah, Ruben.
Well, on my deal, I was that I think we should go ahead and roll with the three alternatives. The new building, the existing City Hall and the DQ. Get the reports for all three of them. And then if there's another alternative somewhere, if you guys decide, then let's get a report and let's get down and let's see what, what's gonna be the best.
Are we clear on, are we just gonna build a new City Hall or police station and a City Hall? Of what? I mean, we go give him an option. I mean, if I, you know, I don't know, if we don't do that, be a both of it. To me, we wouldn't take advantage of sharing a lot of stuff and cut out some expenses. Or in the future, I don't know what else you would do with the city, with the police station, but I think we eventually got to do something with the City Hall. I think that's part of the the wastewater plant that there was, is tied to that, so. So you guys tell me, are we gonna build a, I mean, we gotta talk about it. We gotta make a decision. Are we gonna do a City Hall and a police station? Or just the City Hall?
No, we want to do both. But, okay, now we're, now that I get what you're saying. What if we do the, let's just say first, and we do the City Hall at the DQ and then the existing City Hall that we have right now, there's possibility a PD office, a station. Can that work out like that?
To me, the Dairy Queen, to me, is not an option really. You can't extend it in no, no direction. And Rednecks not any larger than our City Hall. You can't go west. You can't go back east. The, the road is on the north side. You can't expand it. The biggest thing we need, we have a problem right now with a meeting room, so you gotta get some, quite a bit of area for that. A hallways, we got, you have got to put two restrooms, so I don't see where this, to me, is an option for just to see the hall by itself. That's my personal opinion, because there's no direction to expand it.
But, Mayor, this is Alderman Middleton. You know, my main concern, whatever we do, is that this is not going to be a hundred percent grant. The taxpayers are going to be, you know, there's gonna be more money added to their water bill or something because it's not a hundred percent grant. There is gonna be a loan that we're going to be paying.
Yeah.
And I personally do not see and do not feel that we can put any more money on the citizens of Seagrave's through their water bill, period. We'd have to increase, but either way, I mean, that's.
Uh, you guys, let me say, hold on, you guys, it's, hold on. We're getting out of order without, everybody's talking. That's not where we're supposed to be doing it. You need to be recognized. And I didn't even hear what Cindy was saying. She's muted, so you guys need to stop talking to each other. Sorry. Now, I hear what you're saying, Deborah. That's why I brought it up about the City Hall and the police station. Are we gonna concentrate just on the City Hall or both of them? And, you know, it's gonna be more expensive if we do both. No one have an opinion? Just Cindy, she's muted. I didn't hear you, Cindy.
I said, on the cost, we wouldn't be obligated if we just got him to come down here and, and look at it other than the cost of, of the architect himself, correct?
I think that's right, isn't it, Dan?
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, that's correct. What the council did not do at the regular session was to take the step of actually engaging the architect. You did have a report from Mr. Perkins that the agreement between the architect and the city was acceptable to the USDA and that the terms of that agreement were in compliance with what the USDA requires. Mr. Perkins also told us that we would be paying for these services. That's never, never have, have they ever said anything otherwise. That we would engage the architect, just like if you were building a house, you would engage an architect on your own. And you'll pay that architect to do whatever you want him to do. He's for hire. You want him to look at three different options, he'll do that. You want him to look at 10, he'll do that, but you'll pay for those options. And once we finally settle and go to closing, we'll be reimbursed for that cost. We'll also have to pay for an environmental study. That's something that has to be done, but we can, we can pay for that as well. But you have to first actually agree to engage this architect. Otherwise, nothing happens.
Did we say the cost would be between $20,000 and $25,000 to do that?
Those, sir, are the ballpark estimates that have been thrown around these last couple of years, that it would probably be in the neighborhood of 20, 20 some thousand, 25,000 to get the drawings and all of that up and running. Very soon after that, we would go to closing, I'm sure, and then we'd begin bidding the job. We'd be reimbursed for that. To answer Alderman Middleton's concern about raising revenue any further, I agree with her. And you're also gonna be, now that the state legislature has curtailed a city's ability to just levy new taxes, it, it is gonna be a consideration. However, it's my belief and, and you're probably gonna want to have an independent financial advisor like CPA, take a look at our books to reassure us of this, but just based on my experience at paying the bills every year, I feel that the city is with existing revenues capable of entering into this agreement and making the payments on it. So I don't think that there's anything fiscally prohibitive with us not proceeding. I would remind the council that the very nature of our agreement with the USDA and the big money, the $4 million that has been committed, where we're already getting a lot of calls from, from contractors to begin work, that is contingent on the city becoming compliant with all of the equal rights amendments, among them, equal access to people with disabilities.
This is Alderman Sellers. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, I can hear you.
While, while, while I don't disagree with what Dan said, I do remember clearly it being stated that this grant or loan, this $4 million was contingent on the fact that we are seeking to make those, not that we are, that we have to set in stone, but that we are seeking, and that's exactly what we're doing. We are seeking to get this done. And the other, the other thing while I have the floor that I'd like to mention is I, I, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought that the engineer in our last meeting said that he would be happy to come down and visit with us about this feasibility study prior to starting the feasibility study. And I thought that's what we were gonna do with, meet with him. I, and, and I remember Mr. Perkins even saying, well, you know, normally you're in, they, they wait till you're in contract with them to do that. But he said, I, I, I stand, you know, I stand corrected if I'm wrong, but I believe he said that, you know, he, he would be happy to come meet with us after, I believe it was after the first year.
Yeah, I think that's true.
Hey, come here, David.
So in order, you know, Dan's saying that we, we have to be, we have to do something tonight, what to, to agree for, to a contract. I, I didn't, I just, I didn't feel like that's what our next step was at this time. Who's the mayor?
Who's Trump?
Mayor.
Yes.
Where?
Seagrave.
And Mary Horton, you need to mute your screen, please.
You want me to undo it? Should be on.
No, you're, you're not muted.
You want me to mute?
Yes, because we can hear all of your background noise.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you. Can you still hear it?
Yes. Dan, can you mute her? There you go, you're muted.
Uh, I know this, this is not only a general, but it's still is part of the city's business, this is something going to happen. And eventually it's going to happen within the next year or two, is our water tower. I mean, I think, I think that process has already been approved. But it's a part of, most of it is a grant and then it's others, uh, go into a loan, but that's something we need to be thinking about. We're talking about other expenses, I mean, there's going to be another addition to our water bill and sewer rates. Uh, it's just unfortunate that the city hadn't done anything in thirty or forty years. You know, this administration has just, uh, they just got stuck with it and you'll have to share the bad news, but I mean, that's something that we're going to have to be thinking about, so it's going to have to be happening. So, uh, but anyway, we can get back to, uh, what we will tonight is, uh, is, uh, we can do that, but if the next step we want to do is the, is get the engineer to come back up here and visualize with us, and we can do that. We just need to set a date. You're muted, Deborah.
You know, I, I guess my problem is, is from the beginning when we started this sewer stuff that was mandatory, because we were going to start getting fined by the state. And when we did that, then all of this was thrown into that same thing, that we had to have a new city hall, new police department because of meeting all of the standards that Dan is saying and all that. And to me, it became that this sewer plant stuff is still going to go on even though we are not, we might not get a new city hall or police department. Am I understanding that right, that it's if we start trying to get in compliance? I just want to make sure.
I, 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 I think the city hall for sure was the one that was out of compliance. And, and it, we understood it, we had to have something in progress that we were going to build it or go to do it, I never did, I, I didn't was real clear with that myself, maybe John could help me.
Yeah, um, Mayor, can I?
Yes.
Comment on that? So, uh, that, that's, uh, correct. As long as you were working on fixing the ADA compliance, the section five oh four um, issues with, with the, uh, city hall, then, then you were okay with going forward with the sewer project. And so, no, no one has said that you, you have to, you know, build a new city hall, or it has to be completed prior to the sewer or anything like that, as long as you're working toward fixing those. And we, we haven't told you how to fix those issues. And, and that's really, you know, what the council decides. Are we going to fix it by modifying the building, are we going to build a new building, or, you know, there are different ways of, of fixing those things. And as long as you're working towards that, then you're, you're good to go on the sewer, and it's not going to hold up the sewer project.
Mr. Perkins, I have one question. When you're saying city hall, that does not include a new police station? Or updating the police station, or is it both?
I believe, I, I believe we're only talking about the city hall.
Yeah.
And so, and, you know, the, it, it's really the place, place where the bills, the water and sewer bills are being paid. It is, is, and so for a city, we're normally talking about the city hall that has to meet all the federal guidelines on ADA and five oh four.
I guess my question is to the other council members then, do we, are we want to tackle both at the same time, police station and city hall? Or do we want to see what's feasible for us just to do the city hall first?
Uh, uh, um, Milton, personally, I think we really should get the two uh, options from the engineering firm, just to see shepherd what, what it costs and two, and then if you decide later, if you had to build another police station, what that would cost. And so you can, I, I think you're going to see, I mean, I don't know how necessary it is for the police station, but the city hall, I think this like we're in right now, we can't, uh, uh, a meeting room is too small, that there's, the restroom is just out of compliance really bad, so to me, that's something going to need to be done, but you could still consider, let it, let the, the architect, I mean, the engineering firm give us two options on a police station and a city hall. Then a city hall by itself, and maybe later on, when a police station comes. I mean, I think we should look at that, because I think there's some savings. Uh, if you've done them both, I know there is, because you can share like meeting rooms, restrooms and whatever, but that's just, I just those that I have for you to consider, and then what I don't think will cost us that much for them to give us those figures. But I, I agree, we really need the city hall, but it's just going to be a caution when we look at it. I mean, it just was my opinion, so, uh, yeah, what, what, what would happen if city, they'll be able to sit hall in the next five years, is there any penalties that we would face?
Well, we would do a civil rights compliance review every three years. And so, your, your next compliance review, we may not be able to pass uh, you, and, and so, um, you know, we, we'd have to figure out, we'd have to sit down at that time and, and figure out, you know, how you're going to comply with that. Um, you know, as far as penalties, we're, we're not a enforcement agency, we don't penalize you on things, but um, you know, that, that's something that you would have to show us how you're going to get in compliance and, and, uh, you know, it, it's better to, you know, be planning for that, and instead of waiting until we have that meeting. Uh, I do believe that, that the architect did say that he would, he was willing to come down or come up there um, after the first of the year, that's correct. And, and look at some, you know, what you wanted him to look at. Uh, so, um, you know, so you, you, you may want to wait till he comes and, you know, before you sign the, the agreement, um, he did say he was willing to come without a signed agreement. Um, I kind of thought he would be on the, on the meeting today to discuss that, because I can't really speak for him. But I'm, I'm, I'm sure, you know, there, there's a limit as to what he can do until he has a signed agreement.
Okay, I get, excuse me, I guess we could contact him here next day, so then, uh, in, uh, plan a meeting. Or do y'all want to have a separate meeting, I let him come in our regular meeting in January?
I guess I, as, I'd just like to ask the other aldermen, what are y'all thinking, are y'all wanting to do a new police station, city hall? Or I mean, it, what are y'all wanting to look at? When he does come, you know, we, we need, uh, I, I don't know.
I was sitting there.
Um, Deborah, I, I'm willing to look at it, if our cost wise, if we could fix the building we're in, or, you know, a lot of things, as cheap as, I mean, I don't mean cheap, but any, as inexpensive as we can. I, I mean, so I say get him to come down, let him see our building, let him say we can add twenty foot here, twenty, you know, do something like that. That's, I mean, that's me, I mean, versus tearing something down and starting all over. I'd like to see what he has to say.
I heard him the other night, that's what he was saying, the last time the uh, remodeling, the modifying the existing period costs as much as you build one from scratch. I mean, this, I did hear him say that, so anyway, uh, we can do that, but, uh, I, I see no other way. You can do that without tearing it completely down and start.
Charles, this is Alderman Sellers.
Yes.
Um, I, I, my suggestion is, uh, perhaps that we try to schedule that meeting with him, see if he will come down without signing the contract, I'm, I'm certainly not opposed to going into contract with him at some point in time soon. But also, in the meantime, once we get that meeting scheduled, then we can all do our homework, and we can all have our list of questions that we our concerns that we have, so that we're ready for that meeting. And, you know, and, and certainly the concerns that we have are, do we want to do one building or both, one department or both? And then, of course, you know, the, the question, the obvious questions, are we talking about brand new, we're renovating, you know, whatever. But we just need to do our homework, have those questions ready, and meet with him, we need to get that meeting scheduled. Uh, the agenda just says that we're discussing, you know, possibilities, it doesn't say anything about going into contract with a engineer or anything like that, so I, I, I think our discussion, I think that's what we've done is discussed it and we just need to move on to the next agenda item, in my opinion.
Anybody else have any more comments? Okay, if nothing else, so then we move to item five, discussion and possible action regarding requiring an animal control mo- mobile unit. I think there was some misunderstanding of how the vehicle that the chief has purchased was going to be paid for, I think he thought that the city was gonna uh, pay for it, and, uh, I thought originally, uh, the economic development board was going to pay for it. And I think what we budgeted for was just the utility, I thought, for this for the city, is that not right?
Uh, this is Alderman Sellers, I went back and looked at my notes for the budget. What we budgeted was, uh, it was eight thousand dollars, I believe.
Uh huh.
Which would have been, uh, whatever, I can't do the math in my head, let me pull up my calc, my calculator, but but we were, what we budgeted for was for the vehicle, but to be financed. So that would have been at a rate of whatever.
Oh, okay, that was, that was a year.
Six hundred fifty dollars a year, whatever that, whatever that was, I think that we had. Uh, but that's what, that's what my notes showed, is that, and that, I, I don't have those in front of me, it was under a capital outlay. It was eight thousand dollars under, the, the, the Tahoe's, the payments on the Tahoe's were listed under debt retirement. But the eight thousand under capital outlay is what we budgeted to be financed for that pickup for the animal control.
So that's fine, I mean, I read those finances, the, the PKP cash for it myself. I, I think that's good, but, uh, Dan, uh, is that too late to get that with government capital, the financing view?
I, I don't know, uh, government capital, I'm sure would be willing to finance the vehicle for us. Uh, we really shouldn't be putting monthly payments in capital outlay, capital outlay is for capital purchases, one big purchase. That money should have been budgeted into debt reduction if it was intended as another payment. We can move that, we'll have to do some budget amendments in order to accomplish that. But that can all be done.
This is Alderman Sellers, um, but Dan, you were in those budget meetings with us, you were clearly there with us when we were budgeting that stuff. And if, uh, if that was the case, then we should have, we should have been told that. I mean, it's, it's, it's not our fault that we budgeted it in the wrong line item, and i- if you knew that, that we shouldn't have put it in that line item, then you should have directed us to do to, uh, to do this otherwise.
Like the mayor, ma'am, I was under the impression that what you were doing was budgeting for the utility bed for that truck. Uh, if, if there was another discussion that I didn't, I don't have it in my notes. And we were conducting those meetings just like we're conducting this one, so there's plenty of room for people to miss things, but that is the impression that I was under, is that the, uh, the, uh, economic development board was going to buy the truck and that we were going to furnish the, the utility bed that went in the truck. Anyway, that's not where we are, so what shall we do?
This is Alderman Sellers again. And I'd just like to make a statement right now regarding this. But this is exactly why we should not be having these meetings this way, this is exactly why meetings in person have to start happening soon, we're, we were the only taxable entity in Gaines County that is not having person, in-person meetings. And it's, 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 there's too much room for error, there's too much, we, we can't communicate well. Half the time, these things, things are being missed. And it's simply because of these Zoom meetings. And again, we are the only taxable entity in Gaines County that is continuing to meet by Zoom and not in person. I just want to make clear that that's how I feel.
This is, uh, Alderman Wadzick, and I'm in complete agreement with Kendra. Um, we are in a room that is clearly large enough that we can have the meeting and everybody be present and be six foot apart, and if you still need to wear a mask, then you can wear a mask. But there is no reason why we should still be doing these Zoom meetings like this because of errors that are happening just like this. And it seems to be convenient errors that we're like missing out on.
I think we do have to have a Zoom meeting.
Mayor?
Yes.
Cindy Durham, um, you know, you and I both are on the, um, you know, you and I both are on the, um, the board of the economic development. There's plenty of money there. All I, I mean, it'd probably be when school starts back. But I don't think there'd be a bit of problem with anybody on that board because we had discussed buying the pickup. Um, and, and I don't think there'd be any problem with that. If we call a meeting and, and, uh, you know, probably be next week because like Tina and, and Mr. Go in there out for school and, and, uh, but I mean, I, I think that we could have a meeting maybe next week, um, and, and just go ahead and purchase this pickup. And, and if you want, if the board here, the council wants to go ahead and pay for the bed or not. I've got the figures on that totally.
But, uh, Cindy, uh, if we can finance, wouldn't be, I mean, I just hate, I mean, we gonna, aren't the plan is to finance the animal control building?
We, yes, probably yes. But I mean, we're, we're talking about, you know, thirty thousand or less versus, you know, however much. The bed itself is less than eight thousand dollars. I'm trying to, sixty seven, I think. Okay, the pickup, the pickup is twenty six thousand fifteen dollars and fifty cents. Okay, and the bed is six thousand seven hundred and sixty four fifty four. I mean, most of us on the board, um, we've, we've all talked about it. You've been there. Most of us all agree to pay for things. We, you know, the money's there and it's for the community and, you know, um, it just create a mess. Now, I, I do realize that the building, if we can finance it and, and, you know, have a good rate or something, that'd be fine. But I mean, we're talking thirty four thousand dollars. And, and we have, you know, like it's getting close to seven hundred thousand in that account. So I don't think that anybody on the board, I know Ricky Taylor and Josh and Terry Milliband and me are all one that are like pay for things as you go, you know? And, uh, so, and maybe we've dropped the ball by, by, like you say, the meetings and not being able to get together and everything. Um, that, uh, you know, and we've waited till the pickups here and the bed needs to be put on and, and we're kind of in a timeframe of we need to get it paid for and tended to. So that would probably be the fastest way is to have the economic development meeting, agree to pay for it. If, if the, if the city council wants to use the eight thousand dollars to pay for the bed, that could be paid separate. Or, or we could just move that money over into, you know, maybe stuff of other parts. I mean, the, uh, of getting that, but whatever you think, I mean, that's just my thinking.
I don't have a problem with paying for it from the economic, I mean, I just thought it would be better to save that money for when we really need, because we really don't know for sure how much the animal control bill is going to cost. Uh, you know, we really haven't.
Yes, yes.
Really don't know because you, I think it's going to be fifty thousand plus to get what we want.
You think what?
Fifty thousand at least, the building.
For the facilities?
Yeah, for animal control.
Hundred and fifty thousand or more. You can, the municipal, in miss, uh, you know, when you start doing that, they, they raise that price terrible. I mean, yeah, an individual can have it built a whole lot cheaper. But when you start, you know, getting the governments involved in stuff, which, you know, we found that out. But, but hopefully, you know, we'll get some bidders in here and work slow and we can get a decent price. But, but that could be financed easily and we would have time to look into that before, you know, once, I mean, I, I would like us to get somebody going on that, get some, start taking bids.
Mayor, mayor, yes.
Mayor, this is Ruben, Alderman, Ruben. Well, this is not on the agenda. Can we move on? This, we're talking about.
I mean, it's, it's, it's kind of.
You can go ahead and, yeah, you can go ahead and call a meeting next week, whatever y'all got to do, but we're not talking about dog town. We're talking about the truck, what we're going to do and let's move on.
But it's the animal control, uh, pickup we're talking about and.
Pickup, yes, yes.
To, let me answer Cindy, let me answer Cindy's question right quick and then we will. Cindy, uh, that's the reason we shut the project down is to get qualified engineers to give us the drawings and plans and what was best for us. That's why we shut that project down. We can't just get the individual contractor to look at it. We got to go through the engineering firm and then we'll send out be it something that way. But anyway, okay, Ruben, you're right. Okay, back on the pickup, how do you guys, it's simple, just how do you want to pay for it? Do you want the, uh, pay for it right now by the city or by the, uh, um, the, uh, economic board?
This is Alderman Sellers.
Yes.
Whatever, whatever it takes to get this done expeditiously, that pickup is sitting there. They're, they're not going to like the fact that it's sitting there.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, the best way we, I mean, we can do it just.
My suggestion is Dan can call.
Government capital.
The government.
Capital.
Whatever and, 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 and see how expeditiously they could get that financed, if they could get it done. And if they can't, then we can move on to the plan B, but we need to be doing that within the next day or two.
Well, let's just note on it so we can make sure. Dan, can you do that? I mean, will you do that?
Yeah, I'll contact government capital tomorrow.
Okay, uh, I do need a, a motion and a second that, uh, what our first charge would be to purchase this vehicle is to finance it and second, we will go to the, uh, economic development. Go ahead, Cindy.
Okay. Mayor.
Yes.
Cindy, Cindy Durham, um, I, I make a motion that we go forward with this just like we planned, just like we budgeted the eight thousand dollars to be financed. Go through that process if it, and just like Kendra said, if, if it can't be done quick enough, then we will go to plan B. Uh, to get the pickup paid for and, and get it on in service. I make that motion.
Do we, is that clear? Do you understand what we're going to do? Are we going to finance is our first choice?
Yes.
And then, okay, okay, do I have a motion?
Cindy Durham makes a motion. Alderman Sellers, second.
Okay, motion has been made in second. I'll in favor, Alderman, Ruben Vice.
Aye.
Alderman, Cindy Durham.
Aye.
Alderman, Shannon Wadzick.
Aye.
Alderman, Deborah Middleton.
Aye.
And Alderman, Kendra Sellers.
Aye.
Okay, motion has been passed to first option is to, uh, see if Dan can, uh, contact government capital and see if we can finance to that if that's not quick enough and then we will pay for it. And the, well, does anybody else have anything else they want to say that we can't have, that's not on agenda?
If I may ask a question, please, Mayor.
Yes.
It's in regards to the animal control vehicle. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought about a year ago, the funds from the economic development board were going to be moved over to the general fund and that account was going to be closed or did something happen that I missed between?
Well, yes, yeah, uh, we used to have two economic development. There was A is the one that we dissolved. And that was moved to a separate fund basically for it, in the water department for road repair. And I mean, I wrote the, uh, uh, you know, flood leaks and things of that nature. Did I ask your question, Lee?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Oh, if there's nothing else, I guess I need a motion to adjourn.
This is Alderman Sellers, I'm making a motion that we adjourn.
Motion has been made.
Alderman Middleton, seconds.
Okay, motion has been made in second to adjourn, meeting adjourned.